Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That means we're good.
Hi, can you guys see me?
No. All is well, Ann.
Okay, I don't know what's going on with my camera.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
And I'm into the sign here.
Good evening. I'm Mayor Donald T. Lopez, Village of Los Ranchos to Albuquerque, and I want to welcome all of you to our Board of Trustees' regular meeting, conference through Zoom streamed on the Village website and Facebook. The time is 7:00 PM on May 12, 2021. To remain in compliance with the State of New Mexico's public health order, the Village of Los Ranchos to Albuquerque will be conducting this live meeting via Zoom video conferencing and streaming on its website and Facebook page. At this time, I'm going to call a roll. Trustee Rael.
Here.
Trustee Lewis.
Here.
Trustee Pacheco.
Here.
Trustee Rickabini.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Need us? We have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Rickabini.
Yes.
Let's move to item four, public comment period. Participants may address the Board of Trustees to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Submitted written comments that were sent to the clerk prior to the meeting will now be read. I'm going to refer to Danielle.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I did not receive any written comments for this period.
Thank you. Participants wishing to speak that registered with the clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting will be provided an opportunity to speak within the allotted three-minute time limit. Is Mr. Joe Craig on?
He is. Stand by.
Can you hear me, Joe?
Yes, I can, Mayor. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Joe Craig, 505 Caillad del Pajarito Northwest, Los Ranchos.
Thank you, Joe. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. I did have another item that I wanted to talk to you about. I did talk with Ann Simon today, so I'm sort of running up against some deadlines on other things that I'm doing in my business. But I do want to comment about last night's P&amp;Z meeting. It was appalling. I don't use that word much, but it was appalling. The...I know some of you watched the meeting. John Calvin, who's one of our great Los Ranchos residents and serious, certainly a great business owner, was really beat up in our P&amp;Z meeting. Mayor, I know you can't do anything about the Neighborhood Association, but I think we can request that our... the Drew CV, our chairman, could request that people be considerate in the meetings. I was taken aback by a couple of the commissioners. They were very aggressive. It was not a good meeting, and I don't think this is what we want. It's certainly not what I want as a village resident to convey to our businesses to allow literally some lies that were coming out of the Neighborhood Associations. It was appalling. I mean, that's the only word I can hear. And Mayor, the commissioners, planning and zoning commissioners, serve at your... I'm not...it's not your leisure, but at your...for you, I think you really need to look and talk to them about how they handle our businesses and their response, not only to the applicants, but to the planning and zoning department. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Good to see you again.
I appreciate your comments, Joe. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting? If so, please use the raise your hand button. We will call on each individual one at a time. Is there anyone out there, Kiko?
Mr. Mayor, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Therefore, we can move on. Item five is presentations. We have Dan Darnell, Waste Management, an industry update. Kiko, please unmute the participant.
Mr. Darnell, you've been allowed in. You can share your microphone and your camera, and you should be able to share your screen as well.
All right, Mr. Mayor and trustees. I'm going to try to do this.
Dan, please state your name and address for the record in full.
Sure. It's Dan Darnell, and I live at 6444 Augusta Hills Drive in Rio Rancho.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to try to share my screen here, and tell me if you can see it, if you would, please. Maybe I need some help sharing that. Can you guys see my screen at all?
Not yet.
We cannot yet. Mr. Darnell, if you click on your share screen button, and then you can select either your presentation or your entire desktop, you'll have to double-click one of those when you select that, and then it should allow you, us, to see the screen.
Very good. My full screen went away, so I'm trying to figure out... figure out how to do that. I was afraid this was going to happen. I don't see a share screen. I'm sorry. Can you help me out?
The share screen will either be at the very top of your Zoom, on your Zoom meeting bar, or it'll be at the bottom. So either the top of your computer screen or near the bottom, you might have to move your mouse over the images of the mayor and the trustees in order to see the share screen selection.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I think you guys all have my presentation. Is that correct?
No, we...I don't...I have not seen your presentation. Danielle, tell me if we did receive it or not.
Mayor, trustees, there was not a presentation submitted to include in the packet. I'm sorry, Dan.
Go ahead.
If you want to get it over, email it. We can try to share screen it for you.
I think I got a share screen right here. You can tell me if you see this.
It's starting to share. There it is.
Right.
Beautiful.
All right. Yes, score. That's nice. Well, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. But I'm Dan Darnell, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Waste Management in New Mexico. I met with Ann, the mayor, talked to the mayor, and I met with trustees Rael and Pacheco to explain how our use of a new innovative technology system that we call Smart Truck can provide benefits to the residents in the Los Ranchos community as a whole. But this is going to be a new...some new information for trustees, Lewis and Rickabini. So I apologize that we weren't able to connect ahead of time. But I have a brief presentation to introduce this program to all of you who haven't seen it and to the residents who might have tuned in, and then to answer any additional questions that you might have. I'll be doing an awareness presentation only tonight, and we wouldn't be asking for any board action at this time, but we would be asking for board approval for an amendment to our agreement at your June board meeting, so the next meeting, which would cover one housekeeping item and would officially allow us to begin this Smart Truck program. I don't know what happened there. My screen just started sharing. But we would like officially to start this program as of July 1st. A way of introduction, since April of last year, when COVID lockdown began, we've seen a tremendous increase in the amount of residential trash and recycling. The overload peaked in June at about 35% above normal and then gradually reduced to...decreased to somewhere in the area of 25% above normal, where it leveled off, kind of remained at that level since then. And there's some very real cost to dispose of trash and recycling, which are built into the rates that the homeowners pay. The percentage of the rate which pays to dispose of the material that we pick up is based on historical volumes measured by weight. So any amounts above that has to be paid by someone, and in this case, over 2020, that was Waste Management. But we were willing to do so in part because we didn't have any idea when the volumes would come back down to normal or if they ever would, and because we believed that all of us were in this COVID nightmare together. So let me show you some random photographs of the condition of containers that we're seeing, just to give you a point of reference in terms of what we're trying to address with the Smart Truck program. These photos aren't cherry-picked to overstate a problem. They're reflective of the conditions that our drivers are seeing on route. These were taken randomly, but our drivers are seeing similar conditions throughout the rest of the community. And many of these overloaded containers are seen at the same homes week after week. On recycling weeks, we've been noticing that residents are putting excessive trash, which won't fit into their trash containers, into their recycling containers. And of course, that just adds to our recycling contamination. Because if this trash is collected as recycling, then it has to be sorted out once it's dumped at the material recovery facility, which adds to the processing expense. And then we pay again to have it transported to the landfill as trash. And we estimate that to handle this trash disposal from the MRF costs our residents about three times more than if we picked it up as trash at the curb. We've seen our contamination rates as high as 35%, and of course, that just adds to the cost that our residents have to pay if we're going to continue to recycle. Here, rather than come to this board and ask for disposal increases to pay for the extra trash and recycling, and then the additional recycling contamination fees that we have to pay to Freedman's Recycling, which would result in an increase to the rates for all the residents across the board. We've opted and developed a program which is designed to identify and work with the homes that are experiencing the overages and contributing to the recycling contamination. We want to work with them to change their behaviors. We're going to be asking them to perhaps get a second cart at a discounted rate or perhaps learn to recycle correctly. It just seems like a novel, fair, and equitable way to deal with these costs without burdening the overall rates charged for these services. And I look at this as a great cost containment measure for our entire community. We're calling this program Smart Truck, and it's a model which Waste Management has rolled out in Northern California with a great deal of success. We've invested a lot of money in technology and training to develop a camera system that's installed on all of our residential trucks, and that's depicted in this slide. The front and the rear-facing cameras have been in place for many years as a way of ensuring the safe operation of our trucks. But we've enhanced that system to include additional cameras installed on the side of the trucks as well as cameras that are installed in the hopper to view the contents of the containers as they're being dumped into the truck. So this is how the program works. Every stop is linked to a particular address at the curb. The system will identify the condition of the container, the address associated with each container, and the contents will be captured in the case of recycling. Now, these photos and videos will be reviewed daily by a team of what we call auditors to proactively monitor our service. They're going to be reporting any service hazards that we find, broken containers which might need to be repaired or replaced, and to look for containers which are overloaded or instances of recycling contamination. And this provides us a unique opportunity to give feedback to the resident in near-real-time conditions. The program is designed to communicate with residents to connect them to the resources that they may need in terms of information or access to additional container. The overall goal is to create an opportunity for a positive touch point and to change behaviors, which could help contain the costs of providing these services and enhance the health and aesthetics of the neighborhood. Now, we're proposing that we begin a 60-day evaluation and education period on or about July 1st. That'll run July and August. During this time, we'll introduce the program to the residents using materials such as postcards, mailers, email, car tags. We'll be using social media channels. It'll be placed on both the Village and Waste Management's websites, and of course, we'll be doing some press releases as well. Customers with contamination or overages are going to receive communications from us as soon as possible after the incident to let them know that they can receive a second container at a discounted rate to mitigate any overage fees later on, and also how and what to recycle to stay within the guidelines of what's permissible for single-stream processing. But conducting a 60-day intensive education period upfront allows us to set expectations and minimize customers. A focus on educating customers about unacceptable ways to recycle practices while providing warnings gives them time to change their behaviors and avoid any future charges. We'd like to go live beginning September 1st under the following guidelines. All customers will receive two additional warnings, overage warnings or two additional contamination warnings in any rolling 12-month period. After the second warning, a customer will have a contamination or overage fee added to their next quarterly invoice each time they're not in compliance. Communication will be sent either electronically or in writing with each warning or chargeable incident, so there shouldn't be any surprises when they receive their invoice. This slide just depicts the suite of education outreach materials that we have available. We're trying to really front-load the rollout by making sure that every resident is informed about the program and that homes which generate overages or recycling contamination are fully aware of what they can do to mitigate those problem areas. So the first 60 days, you're going to be focusing heavily on communicating with residents. No fees imposed. It's just an educational period. And then after the go-live date, we'll use many of these same materials to continue to communicate with customers as needed, as we deal with individual incidents. Now, here's a chart we looked at, which shows the success of the pilot program that was rolled out in Northern California, and it's kind of hard to see. But the orange line are the overages, and the blue line tracks contamination. The chart tracks the first 60 days or eight-week education period, and then the star indicates go-live. If you'll note, both the instances of overages and contamination were reduced as the communication plan was rolled out and reduced even further after the go-live date. And we're hoping for a very similar trend here. I'll be tracking the success of the program on a monthly basis, and we'll submit the results with my monthly report to staff. I'd also be happy to update the governing body when requested to do so. Mr. Mayor, trustees, I appreciate the time that you've given me this evening, and that really concludes my formal presentation, but I'll stand for any questions.
So Dan, I want to thank you very much for a really well-done presentation. What I'm going to do is...are there any comments or questions from the governing body? If so, we will have each trustee ask their questions before moving on to the next trustee. Trustee Rael.
I just have a comment, I guess. From this program, it appears that what is going to happen is that it'll drive the cost to the people that are incurring the cost. So that's probably a good thing, and that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Rael. Trustee Lewis.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you, Dan.
Trustee Pacheco.
I don't have any questions. Dan was pretty thorough in his presentation. Thank you.
Trustee Rickabini.
Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate the presentation. No questions at this time.
Okay, Dan. I think you made a good mark tonight, so appreciate you presenting to us, and we will be talking to you in the future, okay?
Have a great night.
Okay, let's move on to item six, the consent agenda. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item A, 6A, is the minutes of the April 14, 2021 regular meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes at this time? Okay, I'm going to call for the question. Call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yeah.
Trustee Rickabini.
Yes.
Thank you. Item seven is the departmental reports. The departmental reports are included in the packet and reflect activities for the period listed in each report. If the governing body has questions for the staff regarding the reports, we will have each trustee ask all their questions before we move on to the next trustee. Let me start with trustee Rael.
All right. I don't have a question. I just want to make the comment that in reading all the different material and seeing what Maria has done on Forest Street and other projects, she's really doing a great job, and I just want to say that.
I concur. Trustee Lewis.
Good evening. Okay, let me... My first question is for Ms. Tiffany Justice.
Okay.
Good evening, Tiffany. In your report, you talk about the Review Cannabis Regulation Act, and you're not anticipating changes of... the changes you're talking about are state-mandated changes? Or are there changes that we'll need to make to ours, separate of any state or federal mandated changes?
So trustee Lewis, trustees, so the changes that I discussed with legal are to be compliant with the state's Cannabis Regulations Act. They will have to be made to our ordinances in order to be compliant with the state's Regulations Act. We don't anticipate making these changes for a few months because right now, it all kind of relies on what the rules of the division within... that's created within the act will create, and they haven't created them yet. So we anticipate revising our ordinances to be compliant. However, we...according to the act, we do have some provisions to allow local options to restrict cannabis, commercial cannabis production and sale to some extent.
So you don't anticipate any changes that we need to make to our specific ordinance that aren't mandated from the state at this time?
Yes, that's correct. Only the changes that we'll need to make are from the state.
Okay, thank you. My next question's for Maria.
Hey.
Mayor, trustee Lewis, Maria is excused tonight, but I can try to answer your question.
Okay. Thank you, Ann. In her report on the Forest Street revitalization, she talks about two changes. I didn't see anything regarding...didn't we have an ongoing issue with stamped concrete in ADA?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, and Mayor Lopez, you're welcome to chime in. We did get a preliminary okay from the DOT on that stamped concrete.
Okay. So that's not no longer an issue for us?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Pacheco.
I don't know that it's a question, probably more so a comment. And again, this goes to Maria's report. Reading these month after month, I'm hoping that we are looking at everything that maybe we have done in the past that maybe we will not do in the future. I would assume that we're looking at things now that we're starting the second phase and not doing some of the things that maybe we...mistakes that we made, you know, in the first go-around. And I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, I think Maria is doing a wonderful job with all of this, but again, just working from experience and hoping that we, you know, we don't do the same thing twice.
So trustee Pacheco, I'd like to chime in on that. And Maria Rinaldi and I talk weekly, sometimes daily, but throughout our conversations and my review of everything that she does and what's going on with Forest Street, we have an extensive potpourri of lessons learned, and we know exactly...quite frankly, I believe we know exactly what went wrong, and we certainly have no intention of making those errors and omissions again. I think we will be able to clean up the process, and the next time you see a construction contract, it's my expectation that it will be done on budget, on time, and it will meet the specifications that are made by a registered professional engineer who might...who will be in charge of the project with oversight, obviously, from the village and the village staff. So hopefully, that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions, trustee Pacheco?
Just one other for Fred. Fred, in your report, you mentioned that you talked with... and I don't know if that is one of the sheriffs or a resident of tenant farms. Just kind of curious what's happening there.
Trustee Pacheco, Mayor and trustees, they're still concerned about some of the issues that are going on in tenant farms. They've had a vacant house that's been burglarized a couple times, and so I'm working with them and the sheriff's office to get them some data on the crime so that they can make decisions on how they want to address it within tenant farms.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, trustee Pacheco?
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Rickabini.
No further questions, Mayor.
I appreciate it. Okay, our next item is financial business. Item A is discussion and approval of the cash report. Item A is discussion and approval of the cash report for April twenty twenty-one. Item eight A, Treasurer Will Fisher. Is is Will Fisher on the line? I believe he is. Can you unmute Will Fisher, Kiko?
Stand by. Can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you, Will.
Awesome. Awesome. Okay, good evening. Before you, the cash report for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Ending cash balance for the month was six million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-three dollars and seven cents, which is a decrease of twenty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and one cent for the month. And then year-to-date excess of revenues over expenditures is one million, six hundred fifty-four thousand, seventy-two dollars and thirty-one cents. And then I'll turn it over to Ms. Tammy for any unusual or significant activity.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Mayor, trustees, good good evening. Just some of the unusual or significant activities. You will see in your revenues a negative one hundred dollars in the film permit fees. This is for a refund of a deposit that they put down when they were filming. So we did pay that back out to them once they were done filming and everything was returned. The property was good to go once we checked that over. You'll also see that we had a few different items. We have a check to S.B. Friedman for professional services to for Village Center. And we also had a check out to Bernardino County for the fourth quarter fire and EMS services payment in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, three, one hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars. You will also, on that same check, have the fourth quarter payment for the Bernardino County Fire Protection Fund. So those are two items. And then the last three items are all capital expenditures. We had capital expenditures of nineteen thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars for the Village Hall remodel, which is for facility build and air pro. We had capital expenditures in our roadways, bridges, and culverts to High Mesa Consulting for the traffic signal designation and mapping of Fourth Street. And the last item that was significant was the capital expenditures and improvements for infiltrators at Caia de Pajadito. So I will stand for any other questions if there's any other questions on the cash report.
Thank you, Tammy and Will. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the cash report. I'll make a motion to approve the cash report. I need a second. Thank you. Is is there any discussion at this time or questions of either Will Fisher or Tammy on the cash report? I have a couple, Mr. Mayor. Go right ahead. On page thirty-five, general fund, under general administration.
Okay.
Under professional services, computer support. We had budgeted for the period five thousand and paid out ten thousand. Is that a timing issue, or is there something else with computer support?
Yes, Mayor, trustee Lewis, that is a timing, a timing thing, so you will not see a bill for the May cash report.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question in the check register. Age seventy.
Okay.
The check for Steelwood LLC for the gate repair. Is that?
Yeah.
Is that not an MRGCD expense, or is that, or I'm assuming that's an irrigation gate repair?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, I would have to check with Keen on that, but I believe that we have an agreement to where we actually repair the gates, but that's something I will have to confirm with Keen.
Okay, okay. If you could get back to me, I'd appreciate that, Tammy.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you, trustee Lewis. Do any of the other members of the governing body have questions for either Will Fisher or Tammy Silva on our cash report? If not, I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. Item eight B is discussion and approval of the FY twenty-one, twenty-two interim budget. As all of you remember, we had really an exceptional working session on April thirtieth. So I think we're, we should understand the interim budget pretty well. Administrator Anne Simon, please present the administrator, the interim budget, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, mayor and trustees. As the mayor queued up, we really didn't change a lot after our budget workshop on the thirtieth. There there were just two significant changes. Because we had budgeted very conservatively on the GRT, I think I believe we had budgeted that we would be down sixteen percent over FY twenty numbers. But given that it looks like we are going to finish this year, this FY twenty-one only down ten percent, we stuck with the ten percent number. So we are assuming that our GRT is going to match what we what we earned all fiscal year twenty-one, which was all COVID months. So that changed the balance of the of the general fund. It put about one hundred and fifty thousand back into our revenue stream. So you'll see that in the budget workshop, you might recall, we were budgeting with a negative sixteen percent overall general revenue, and that came up to negative thirteen percent. The other change is that we we rolled that extra one hundred and fifty thousand into the facility at on Green Valley Road, Old Village Hall. And we hope to put a new facility there that can be a multi-use facility that is shared by all village residents.
Thank you, Ann. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion in a second, and then we'll have discussion from the governing body. I need a motion.
I move approval.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion from the governing body at this time? Please speak up. I'll take that as no questions, and everybody is is basically good with our interim budget. I'm certainly very happy with it. So I think we've done a great job as a governing body. The staff has done outstanding work putting this together. I understand we'll be sending the interim budget to the state, and then the final budget will be approved in July, and it'll go in by before the end of July. So I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yeah.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. There are no public hearings. There is no old business. There are no announcements. So we move to item twelve, new business. Discussion and approval to adopt ordinance number two seventy-six, an ordinance amending definition of variance, amending variance application and approval process, and amending area regulations for the A-one zone to allow for smaller setbacks for legally non-conforming properties less than half the A-one lot size minimum. Director Tiffany Justice, please present the ordinance.
Mayor trustees, this is the exact same ordinance that was presented to you all last month on variance changes. So just to quickly recap, this will change the definition of variance, change our application and approval process for variances specifically, or especially the unnecessary hardship criteria. And also, we'll be adding a criteria that the hardship itself cannot be self-imposed by the property owner. And in addition to those changes of, we're proposing to have a change to the A-one zone to allow that lots that are fifty percent or smaller and legally non-conforming can have the option of having smaller setbacks without going to the commission for a variance. I went into a little bit more detail on this last month, but I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Tiffany. What I'm going to do now is ask for a motion in a second, and then open it up for discussion from the governing body. I need a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay, trustee Pacheco, I need a second.
I have a second.
Thank you, trustee Lewis. Okay, is there any discussion now from the governing body? Thank you. Doesn't appear so. Okay, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button.
There are no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yeah.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, discussion and approval to advertise ordinance number two seventy-seven, an ordinance allowing short-term rentals, amending and adding definitions, amending a condition of use of the guest house, amending bed and breakfast establishment conditions of approval, establishing revocation procedures, and establishing an effective date. Director Tiffany Justice, please present this proposed ordinance.
Yes, mayor trustees. This is going to be a little bit lengthier than my other presentation since I'll be going over this for, I guess, the first time officially. This ordinance is a long time coming. This is coming on the heels of two public input meetings that happened in two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty, an ongoing public comment period since the end of twenty nineteen, and a policy document that was presented to you all in October of last year. So this ordinance follows that policy proposal that you all saw. And there were three key decisions in that policy that are that policy proposal that we're following. The first is an onsite operator instead of an offsite operator. The second is allowing short-term rental of guest houses instead of not allowing short-term rental. Long-term rental will still be prohibited and prohibiting rental of outbuildings instead of allowing rental of outbuildings. In addition to that, some other considerations that were included in that policy document are to prohibit events and to cap the number of permits issued in Los Franchos. And these are included to address additional concerns for potential nuisances. So I'm going to go through each of these sections. But just as a reminder, even though it's not included in the packet, you know, we received substantial amount of public comment on this, and there's research done on how to best approach short-term rentals in Los Franchos. And please just bear in mind to consider it all. All the comments you received and the research documents are available on our website. So there's three main sections. The first is the definitions. The second is the guest house language. After that, there's some minor technical corrections, and then the bed and breakfast establishment process. And so just before I get into this, I just want to make one minor technical correction to the proposed ordinance. On page one twenty-one in your packet, there's a small typo just with the numbering. Number three, upon revocation, should be number four upon revocation. And number four, if revoked, should be five if revoked. So that's just a small technical correction that I would like. If there is approval to advertise, I'd like that change to be made. And so basically, so just starting with the definitions, the definitions that we, in consulting with legal, the changes that we made for accessory structure is to keep in is to keep with the policy proposal in that document. Outbuildings shall not be rented. We add that language to accessory structures, just to clarify that. The bed and breakfast establishment has been altered to clarify that it is a type of short-term rental. This is something that we discussed. You know, there's different types of short-term rentals. There's vacation rentals with absent owners. There's bed and breakfast with present owners. They're all fall under the umbrella of short-term rentals. So this language has been amended to kind of clarify that a bed and breakfast establishment is going to be a type of short-term rental with an onsite operator present. The number of rental of guest rooms is still going to be four. This is going to be unchanged. And this kind of establishment shall not permit unauthorized guests. And an unauthorized guest, the definition of which, just in consulting with legal, this is the, I guess, best way for us to address the concept of no events specific within our ordinances. And so trying to kind of keep that, keep the intent of that, but just also to make sure that we can actually enforce it and to not trying to find what kind, what an event is. Instead, we're going to say no unauthorized guests. The definition of a short-term rental is included. This is a standard definition that is included in pretty much any other community, you know, thirty continuous days. Even if somebody is renting to somebody on a month-by-month basis over thirty days or even on a two-month basis, unless they have a rental agreement like a lease agreement, then they are in essence operating a business. And if they are operating a business, they should have a business license with the state and in theory, a business license with us. And so we can kind of pinpoint the difference between, you know, a rental with a month-by-month lease agreement with with a business establishment that should have that address, that should, you know, be registered in order to really be getting income. And so, and then I already went over the definition of unauthorized guests. So those are the definitions that we're adding and altering in order to implement this ordinance. The next section is the A-one zone, a small amendment to the guest house to allow for short-term rental only as part of a bed and breakfast establishment. So the difference, the key distinction here is that it would be part of a permitted bed and breakfast establishment. So it cannot, we're not just saying that everybody can short-term rent their guest house. They do have to have it under enlisted as part of their bed and breakfast permit. And then between here and the most substantial section, there's the Gateway District, agricultural commercial zone, and the off-street parking sections. These are all just having some small minor technical corrections for consistency. After that, the bed and breakfast establishments, this is where the meat of this ordinance is. The first thing that you'll see is that there is a cap on the number of bed and breakfast permits established as kind of keeping with the idea from the policy document last October. And it does mention that this will be determined by the Board of Trustees' resolution with the option to raise the cap. Should the board decide to approve advertisement at this month and approve adoption next month, on next month's agenda, there will be a resolution with a proposed cap of, sorry, of seventy-eight permits, which is, I believe, two or three percent of the number of households in Los Franchos. And I can I can get into that, I suppose, next month when there's a resolution possibly. So after that, the approval process will follow our typical bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast approval process. So it will be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission with public notice to all neighbors within the vicinity, either three hundred or four hundred feet, depending on the property size. And there's going to be a list of conditions, of course, that they have to abide by. These are the existing framework of the bed and breakfast permit that we just expanded upon to kind of clear things up, address some concerns that we heard from neighbors for potential short-term rentals or, you know, problems that they were seeing at the time. And so just going through this list of conditions, the first is that the operator does have to be somebody who's living in residence. And they do have to provide proof of that residence, whether they're owner or a renter. There's different ways that you can prove residency. And we would require some kind of documentation of that. And this is not something unusual. Other communities have required proof of residence for short-term rentals, especially just to kind of get around the idea of people who buy multiple properties and rent them out but do not live there. The second condition is that the bed and breakfast itself shall be conducted within the buildings. However, there are activities that can't happen outside that are associated with normal residential use and can be amenities to the rental itself, grilling, using a pool, walking outside, sitting on a porch. And so we want to clarify that, you know, there can be And so we want to clarify that, you know, there can be activities that can take place outside just because that's kind of the amenity that you get when you are renting that place. The third condition is still keeping with what the original bed and breakfast permit had for rooms for rental. The fourth condition, also consistent, is still asks for off-street parking. The only difference is we just add a little bit more clarification for the number of spaces that are required per our off-street parking regulations. Uh, the fifth condition that meals may or may not be served is unchanged. The sixth, unauthorized guests are prohibited. Again, kind of just clarifies that, you know, you aren't allowed to have events, you're not allowed to have unauthorized guests. Seven, eight are both the same as what we've, they're both unchanged. They both refer to the fact that there can be a small sign and they do have to keep the noise down per our nuisance regulations. Uh, the ninth condition is that they do have to have a published rules of operation. Originally, the bed and breakfast permit didn't specify what those rules are. At this point, we now just expanded that to say, at the bare minimum, the rules need to include the following, which includes safety information, evacuation, fire, emergency contacts. It does mention specifically that there are, you know, there is a nuisance ordinance for noise, you know, please keep it down. It does mention the occupancy. It's limited to two adults per guest room, this kind of helps to keep the scale of the operation relatively small. And then the last two conditions, unauthorized or conditions, just rules of operation, are that unauthorized guests are prohibited and events are prohibited. The reason why we included both that language, both of those languages, even though they're intended to mean the same thing, is so that one can, one is technically easier to understand for, in layman's terms, and the other one is more for just enforcement purposes, but they do essentially mean the same thing. A site plan and floor plan is gonna be required as part of the application process. And the operator will be required to list their permit number as part of their advertisement if they are advertising. This is also something that's relatively common in short-term rental ordinances. And it also makes enforcement easier since we can see, you know, if they have a permit number listed, then they're compliant, and if they don't, then they're not compliant. Number thirteen mentions that insurance is recommended, but not required because different platforms provide insurance and some platforms don't provide insurance. It starts to get a little bit tricky and sticky for the village to get involved with the requirement of insurance and actually verifying that. So it was, was recommended by legal that we just keep it to recommendation. And it is the responsibility of the property owner to provide that insurance. And if they choose not to, then it is their liability. Number fourteen and fifteen are the same as our existing bed and breakfast permit, that they comply with all state, federal, county, and municipal laws and that they shall comply with any investigations that may be required from the department. Number sixteen and seventeen are also the same. You know, we may, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, have additional conditions. And number seventeen, they do need to be inspected annually for fire safety. Uh, number eighteen is added and it clarifies that you cannot apply for another bed and breakfast permit after the final date of decision on a prior application. This is something that's consistent for other things that go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Trustees, variances, site development plans, things of that nature, you know, they have a six to twelve month period in which you can't reapply. So this is just kind of to be consistent with that. Our revocation procedure is something completely different than what we had before. Originally, it would follow the home occupation revocation procedure. The home occupation revocation procedure does go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for them to revoke the permit. The idea here is that we've, we've changed it so that if it is a violation of the code, it really should go to the court for, because the court does address violations of the code. Uh, so this process, the first step is, you know, if there's a complaint, they do need to lodge a complaint with us. The second is that we, it will follow our normal violations procedure. However, our normal violations procedure does say that, you know, you have sixty days to abate a violation because our zone, that, that section of the code does tend to talk about things that are long-term, you know, larger zone code violations, like, you know, you put up a structure without a permit or you need to clean your property, you know, you need time to do those things. Because it's likely that the kinds of violations of this section are gonna be temporary in nature, especially if somebody is here for the weekend and then they're gone. After that, we wanted to remove that and say that, you know, any temporary violation is considered a violation. There is no opportunity to abate that because it has already happened. And so the third step is that once we've received the complaint and done our normal process with code enforcement to verify that, to collect evidence on those complaints, we notify the property owner or the operator that there has been a violation. And it isn't, it is a notice because technically we can't say to, you know, abate that violation if it's already happened and it's already gone. But after three violations, that will constitute grounds to take them to municipal court for permit revocation. And that's what subsection three B discusses. So after, so if you have three violations within a three hundred and sixty-five day period, that will take you to municipal court for permit revocation and any other remedies as authorized by law. So that does mean that the judge can issue additional fines per the normal procedures in court. And then upon revocation, all activity must cease and desist within seventy-two hours. This is something that carries over from our home occupation language. And number four, we added, since there seems, to kind of prevent a loophole between, you know, a property owner and an operator, we do say that you can't reissue a license for an operator or a property within a year of revocation. So if somebody is purchasing a property and the bed and breakfast permit was revoked for some, for the previous property owner, that new property owner will not be able to apply until after that time period has, has passed. And any new operator, if they're purchasing another property or trying to rent from another property, they cannot get another license for another year, even if it's not the same property. So we're trying to tie it to both the property and the operator. And then E kind of discusses legally non-conforming short-term rentals. So right now in our code, we don't technically have any language addressing short-term rentals. That's why, you know, this ordinance is being proposed. So there are short-term rentals that are operating that aren't required to get a permit, but we also cannot. And so the idea is to make them come into compliance by getting a permit. However, one of the concerns that you may have seen in the public comments is that people have been operating and they're concerned about the fact that they will not be able to operate. So what we have proposed is grandfathering in existing short-term rentals and requiring them to get a license. But we will only waive the requirements to comply for two things, the maximum number of rooms and the on-premises operator. The idea being that they should still comply with the rest of our rules, you know, make sure to have posted rules of operation, fire inspections, everything else, they should still be doing those things and events should still be prohibited. Except at this point, you know, acknowledging the public comment that we've received, there are some people who have been operating off-premise operator successfully. And we're trying to give them the opportunity to do that. And then after that, under F, the permit renewal fee has been up to sixty-five dollars instead of fifteen dollars. The reason for that, I will get into a little bit later. And then if, and because there is a cap on the number of permits total, if they, if a permit holder doesn't renew their license within forty-five days after January first, their license is expired and it kind of goes back to the general pool for somebody else to get their permit. And so this is the proposed ordinance. There's a couple other things I would like to talk about just with short-term rentals. So I just want to outline the process, should the board approve to advertise this month and then approve to adopt next month. What we plan on doing is having a PSA in the Village Vision magazine, the next issue that would go out is at the end of July. So we're planning on having a PSA then. And then we're also timing it, you may notice that in the ordinance, it mentions October sixth, twenty twenty-one. That is the deadline to get on the November Planning and Zoning Commission agenda. So we're trying to give them two months, at least two months heads up, if they're looking at the Village Vision magazine. And then also if we contract with a short-term rental company, short-term rental code enforcement company that can identify properties that are currently operating without a license, we can also send them letters individually. But this way, we can kind of just do a general PSA. And then, speaking of which, as, as mentioned in the budget workshop, I'm hoping to contract with a company that would help to identify compliant and non-compliant short-term rentals in Los Franchos and to provide a twenty-four seven hotline for nuisance complaints. And services of which, you know, they will receive those complaints and they tend to encourage people to collect evidence in the moment, whether it's video or recording. That way, if they do need to take it to court, there is evidence that that violation did exist. Uh, which does make code enforcement easier. And so the reason for increasing the fee to sixty-five dollars is that in addition to the thirty-five dollar business fee, that would put a total short-term rental bed and breakfast fee to a hundred dollars per year, and that would cover most of this expense. Other communities do have much higher short-term rental fees. So the fact that we're having a more expensive bed and breakfast fee compared to our normal home occupation fee is not something that is kind of out of, out of the blue. And so with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much Tiffany. That was a, a nice explanation of all of what we've been talking about. Before we get to the question, discussion and questions, both from the governing body and from the general public, if any, I need a motion.
I move approval to advertise.
I need a second. Thank you. Okay, is there any discussion from the governing body? Please speak up.
I have a few things I'd like to clarify.
Go ahead.
Tiffany, well, I'd say after going through all the comments and receiving it through meetings, I think you did a good job of trying to address what you could, because you can't address everything, it's just impossible. I think there are so many comments. But I, I, what I have is more questions about clarification. So I'm, if, if you own a guest house and you ask for a permit and receive it to have a bed and breakfast or short-term rental, does that guest house then become a bed and breakfast and not a guest house anymore?
Uh, so trustee Rael, trustees, technically, it would be a guest house still. So even a house that is, that is a bed and breakfast is still also a house. So it can have both titles, both roles at the same time. And also, something that I just also like to clarify too is that we do limit the number of rooms that can be included as part of the guest house, or sorry, the bed and breakfast permit. So we limit that to four. So you could have three bedrooms in the main house plus one bedroom in the guest house and say that's your four. You do have to identify in the floor plan and on the site plan how you're arranging that, and we would hold you to that. So it can be both the guest house and the bed and breakfast.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, another, another thing I have, a question I have, or clarification actually. On page one eighteen, one, one eighteen and one thirty-four, the off-street parking. If you have a one, one-room guest house, then you would need to have five parking spaces, is that correct? If I counted them right, that's.
Uh, trustee Rael, trustees, yes, depending on how, depending on, I guess, the employees involved. So, you know, it mentions one parking space for each employee per shift and then a parking space for each service vehicle associated with the facility. If, if those don't exist, if this is just like a couple who is doing this completely on their own, they're the ones who clean, they don't hire any employees, those parking spaces wouldn't count. But the, the two parking spaces for the homeowner and our property manager would still apply. So you would need three parking spaces. One for the unit and then two for the homeowner and our property manager.
Okay, thank you. And then page, let's see, one twenty-one and one thirty-four under paragraph C and two. I just want clarification, you, you say that operator will not be given opportunity to correct temporary violations and I'm not sure what you mean by that, because shouldn't the, shouldn't the operator be given the opportunity to correct any violation?
Uh, yes, so trustee Rael, trustees, the reason for that language is that so the, the section that it references, section nine point two point two four, it allows the opportunity for the person who is doing the code violation to correct that within sixty days. So we actually do not want to give the operator that same opportunity because most violations that would occur, especially nuisance violations, would have already been passed and technically technically corrected, just because that person isn't there anymore. So we do want to make sure that we note that the, each temporary nuisance violation that occurs, they, they don't have the opportunity to correct those. And we do specify correct temporary violations. So if there's a long-term violation, like their, their sign is too big or it's too bright, though that can still apply to our normal process, is the temporary violations that we're most concerned about. Because with the opportunity to correct, the fact that it wouldn't be there the next day technically means it would be corrected. So we couldn't use that as a violation to take that to court.
All right, that makes sense. I just wasn't quite sure what you meant by that. One other thing on page one twenty-two, one thirty-four. You're saying the late fee for renewal is ten dollars? And you said something about that a while ago, I believe, but I didn't quite get it. It's not ten dollars anymore, is that right? Or is it ten dollars for renewal, for a late fee? For getting the renewal of license?
Uh, trustee Rael, trustees, that is unchanged. Our late fee for home occupations, business licenses and bed and breakfasts is ten dollars.
Isn't that kind of low? It seemed like it's not adequate.
That, that is something that I will pass on to Jennifer Schilling, who takes care of the business licenses. I suspect that the low late fee is based on state statute. But I will, I will look further into that. That's actually also why, like, our, our business permit fee is capped at thirty-five dollars. That's something that's determined by the state. So I imagine that there is a cap from the state, but I will look into that.
All right, thank you. And that's all I have on this.
Thank you trustee Rael. Any other questions from the members of the governing body? Sandra.
Um, Tiffany, first of all, I wanted to say, this has been a long time coming and, and you really did a thorough job in putting this together. I also understand that we are not gonna make every single resident happy. Um, you know, this is something that I know a lot of residents don't want to have happen, but I also understand, and I hope they understand that this is something that we have to do in order to enforce those that are operating without a permit. So I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to put that out there. I do have a couple of questions. The accessory structure that's mentioned. What, what kind of structures does that kind of include? Is that like the barns and those kind of things that people might have on their property?
Trustee Pacheco, trustees, yes. So there is, I guess, there's three different types of structures that can be on a property, on a residential property. There's the main house. There's the guest house, which is, both of those are dwellings. The accessory structure is something that, as, as we're adding into this definition, is not considered a dwelling. So it, it covers anything that isn't the main house or the guest house. So sheds, garages, barns, anything that is not one of the dwellings on the property.
So that won't be spelled out though, anywhere other than if, I mean, unless somebody asks?
Uh, yes, so we can include something like that on our permit to further clarify. At this point, the language that accessory structure is not considered a dwelling, kind of does cover does kind of, I guess, split the line between the different types of structures that can be on a residential property.
Let's see, no long-term rentals can occur, you already answered that, and this is on page 117. I have, so the additional dwellings shall meet the current building and zoning code requirements of the village. I guess my question is, so dwellings have to be compliant in order to receive a permit, right? And then will this be a part of the permitting process? So, so say a dwelling isn't compliant, will we go, will we be sending somebody out there to make sure that it is prior to giving them a permit?
Trustee Pacheco, just to clarify, you are talking about on page 117 subsection E2, is that correct?
Correct.
So technically, that subsection two only applies to the dwellings, the guest houses that fall under E. So as, as confusing as that is, we would only, that, that requirement only applies to when someone wants to have three dwellings per lot, so two guest houses, that will double-check that the current building and zoning requirements of the village are met. And just, I guess, as a further information on that, when a, so we mentioned that the bed and breakfast would have to be inspected by fire annually, that they would have to be up to fire code in order to be a bed and breakfast, and oftentimes that does intersect with, with building code, at least with some aspects. As long as the building is built up to code from the time that it was built, we technically can't require them to come up to current building code standards, but they would have to be compliant with the fire code at the time.
Okay. Okay, and then with regard to the off-street parking, and I know trustee Rial brought this up a little bit, but so can we not grant a permit if there is not enough parking? As stated here?
Yes, so that is what the amendment to, on page 119, under subsection B4, that's what that amendment kind of clarifies. So originally, it just said that parking for guests must be off-street. We didn't say that you had to provide enough parking, we didn't know what that number was, or at least, it, it wasn't as clear. And so with this, we're saying, you know, there's a certain number of parking spaces that you have to have, that you can identify on your site plan as being off-street. If you don't have this number, then you don't get the bed and breakfast permit.
And then you talked about the conforming activities, and I think we're all clear on that now. And I agree with trustee Rial with regard to the $10 late fee. That just seems kind of low to me as well. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Pacheco. Any other members of the governing body with questions? Yes, trustee Lewis.
Tiffany, first of all, let me just say, I think you've done a tremendous job putting this together. I know it's been a long road, you've, you've studied the issue, you've got a lot of public input, and I think you've really done an excellent job of capturing this. A few comments that I have, first of all, in here, you, you refer in one place or a couple places to the commission, and then in another place or two, you talk about planning and zoning commission. And so my recommendation would either to be, make it all unified under planning and zoning commission, or in your definitions, put commission refers to the planning and zoning commission. Second, I want to make sure I understand, as a governing body, we, it's my understanding, we can't just set a, an arbitrary cap for the number of permits, that we have to have it tied to something? Is that correct? Like you mentioned, it was two or three times the number of households in the village. Do we have to add to something, or can we just come up with a number?
Trustee Lewis, trustees, I don't believe that there's anything that requires us to tie the cap to anything specific. I think it could be an arbitrary number if the trustees wanted to do that. What I'm proposing is something tied to the number of households in the village, so it would be 2% or 3% of that, just so that, excuse me, just so that when the village grows, that, that cap on the permits, kind of, there, there's a bit of a baseline for where that number came from. However, I don't believe we necessarily have to have a base, a basis for that number.
Okay, thank you. Also, I know you've done a lot of research on this. There, there's nowhere in here, and I don't know if it's required or not, to do a geographic limitation on the number of permits, maybe on a street. You know, somebody can live on a street, and there can be three or four short-term rentals on their street. Is that something that we should limit, or should we have a distance between short-term rentals? Or is it just possible, somebody can live on a street and have four short-term rentals on their street?
Right, so trustee Lewis, trustees, that's an excellent question. So some communities do have distance buffers between the number, like, between short-term rentals. And just in looking at the research on that, it seemed that it would have unfair implications to do something like that, because it, it prevents somebody who is next to a short-term rental to have one themselves. So especially for those neighbors who have to deal with the nuisances of short-term rentals, they don't have the opportunity to have one themselves. So it seemed like it was beneficial to those who acted early, and would penalize those who just happened to be next door. The idea is that if a neighborhood or a street does have four short-term rentals, then that's kind of just the people who live on that street, they do want those kinds of activities, they also have all, they also have the right to have those activities themselves. Another issue that we came across in the research, just with the distance buffer, is that there are many, there are properties of different sizes in Los Franchos. So, you know, if 300 feet from a property on Rio Grande Boulevard is very different from 300 feet on a property on 4th Street. So, you know, you can capture, you know, six houses or six properties for a property on 4th Street compared to, you know, two or three houses along Rio Grande Boulevard. And another factor to consider is that there is another, some, some communities determine it by blocks or neighborhoods, and that may work for some standard subdivisions and some standard blocks that are, you know, grid-like, but much of the village isn't divided and identified in that way. So it's kind of hard to tell, you know, where does it, where is a block for some of these properties? You know, where is, you know, two in this neighborhood? So, so it was, it became a little bit more difficult to bisect within the village, you know, geographic boundaries. So the idea is to still have a cap on the number of permits, so that we can limit the total number in Los Franchos. But if three people on the same street do want to have a short-term rental, and they get the proper permits to do so, they can, because that, that's kind of just the general attitude of that neighborhood.
Thank you. I knew, I knew you had done a lot of research in that area. I have one more question here, just a second. On page 121, number 18. I, I don't understand that sentence. Can you explain that to me, please?
So that is one of the list of conditions that the bed and breakfast permit issued is subject to. And this is something that is included in other applications that go before the planning and zoning commission and the board of trustees, variances, conditional uses, site development plans, they tend to have that, that kind of exact same language, except with a different date on it, saying that, you know, after a final action has been taken on, on this application, you cannot reapply for up to, for six months from the date of the last action that was taken. So the reason for, for the final action, the prior application, the idea is that this applies when an application's been denied. And so, however, an application can also be appealed. So when is the date of final action on an application? That is the date of appeal if an application's appealed. So you can't apply again until six months after the date of that appeal, versus just date of final action. So we're, we're trying to just kind of be clear. If, if you're denied, you have to wait six months. And if you're denied and you appeal that decision, and your appeal is unsuccessful, you have six months from the date of your appeal to reapply. And also, just to clarify, from one of your other questions, so in the planning and zoning commission section of our code, we do say planning and zoning commission, hence, after referred to as commission, so we do kind of refer to both. So, so that is kind of already clarified in the code.
Okay, Tiffany, thank you very much. Excellent job. That's all my questions.
Trustee Rick Abini, it's your turn.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the work that went into this Tiffany. Very thorough, and I just have a few clarifying questions. So the, so you mentioned 78 permits, is about two, is that 2% of our, our household, houses?
Yes, let me actually, I will, I will pull up the resolution just so that I can give you all the number.
And then that is a, and you, you estimate you've got between 30 and 40 operators right now that are in non-conforming status, right?
Yes, so when, yes, when I got consultations with the short-term rental companies, as kind of a free service, they do, do just like a point-in-time snapshot of how many short-term rentals are in Los Franchos at that time. It isn't necessarily the most accurate, because they don't, they're, they're not sorting out duplicate listings at that time, they're just kind of trying to give us a rough idea. And so that's why there's that estimate, just based on the estimates that I received. That's about how many are in Los Franchos right now, or at, at least at that time.
And, and of those, do you believe that a, a good portion of them are in a, in a, basically a single-family home inside of the main structure, or are they at a guest house?
So trustee Rick Abini, trustees, right now, ideally, they should not be in a guest house. If they are actually permitted as a guest house with the condition of approval that they cannot be rented, they should not be renting in that guest house. If it was a legally non-conforming dwelling that was built without a guest house permit, before the guest house permit, then they can't be renting that. The snapshot that the companies gave us is that it does seem to be that almost all of the short-term rentals in Los Franchos are in the main house.
Okay, is there a requirement to actually use a permit?
No, there is not a requirement to actually use the permit. You do have to renew every year.
Is there, is there a, is there a requirement to have, have to have used the permit in order to renew?
There is not a requirement.
Thank you.
And also, just to clarify, the number of permits that is proposed in the resolution is 78, which is 3% of our census estimate of households, 200, sorry, 2,600.
So, so theoretically, somebody could apply for a permit, never use it, and continue to have that permit?
Yes, so long as they continue to pay the fee on time. The idea with not requiring, I guess, consistent use, is that something that was brought up during the public comment, is that, you know, some people only rent during balloon fiesta. And, you know, other times of the year, they, they don't rent it out, but they would still need to get that permit for that one rental each year. So the idea with that is to still have, I guess, you know, you're not required to have an act, like, current activity, but you do have to be permitted in order to have that activity, whenever you do do it.
Interesting.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions trustee Rick Abini?
No, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone from the public on this call wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raised your hand button at this time.
Mr. Mayor, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote, trustee Rial.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Rick Abini.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you and Tiffany, for doing a great job. Agenda item C, discussion and approval to advertise ordinance number 278 and ordinance amending chapter seven, article two, section seven of the Village of Los Franchos Animal Control Ordinance on Penalty Assessment Misdemeanors. Administrator Anne Simon or, and/or Fred Radasevich, please present this ordinance for advertisement.
Thank you mayor and trustees. The, the attempt here was to simplify the animal control ordinance, at least in terms of the penalty assessment portion, and to give us a little bit more of a deterrent by increasing the penalty assessment on just a couple of infractions from a tiered system of $25, $50 for a second offense, and $75 to just one fee of $50. And this would only be applied to three minor infractions of the animal control ordinance. It includes the number of animals, walking your dog off the leash, and not having vaccinations if, if we do find your animal at large. Those infractions would come with a penalty assessment of $50. And that is a choice. Either the resident pays the $50, or fights the citation in court. And the judge would have the choice of assessing either a $0 to $500 penalty, depending on the severity of the infraction. What is, what is different in this ordinance is that we now focus that $50 penalty assessment on just those three infractions, and all other more serious infractions like poisoning, animals killing livestock, cruelty, all of those infractions go straight to the judge. So they would go straight to municipal court, and again, the judge would have the option of assessing either a $0 to $500 penalty, and up to 90 days in jail. So this just simplifies the, the penalty assessment portion of this ordinance. Is there anything you want to add, Fred?
Go ahead Fred.
Mayor and trustees, no, I think Anne pretty much covered, maybe the only thing is that all the other infractions under the ordinance would still be issued a citation and just sent to the court. If they plead guilty, then the judge just assesses the fine. And, you know, it'll be their option on, on these three items, whether they want to take a penalty assessment or not. Once they take the penalty assessment, it's, it's what they call an admission of guilt, and they just go and have to pay the, whatever the penalty assessment plus the court fees are. And other than that, I think Anne did an excellent job presenting.
Thank you Fred, and thank you Anne. Before we move to discussion from the governing body, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the advertisement of ordinance number 278.
I need a second. Thank you. At this time, is there any discussion from the governing body?
I have a, a question.
I have a, a question.
Go ahead.
On page one twenty-five and one twenty-six, you refer to the citations can be served by mail or in person. Is it typical for, to be, to serve them by mail? Because it seems kind of risky, because they can say, well, I never received it. Is that something that's done typically?
Mayor and trustee Riel, yes. Your summonses and everything are usually sent by, by mail. Years ago, you had to serve them in person, but the courts have ruled now that you can serve them, you can put them in the mail and send them. And so we would hope that the majority of those citations would be issued in person. But if, if the case, then, if they don't, if they're not available to whatever, then we will send it to them in the mail. And at that point, if we don't get a response, then we would ask the, the court to then issue a summons, and they would, they would handle it that way.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, mayor.
Okay. Any further discussion from the governing body at this time? Okay. Uh is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button.
Mr. Mayor, there's no hands raised.
Thank you. I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Riel?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh item D, agenda item, pursuant to section three dash eleven dash six A, parentheses, one, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. Subject to approval of a majority of all members of the governing body, the mayor shall submit the name of an employee to the board of trustees for confirmation. Uh I am pleased to present Joshua O'Halloran as our new agricultural program manager. Anne, would you like to speak on this matter right now?
Sure thing. Thank you, mayor and trustees. I know it was really hard to lose Fergus, who we all love. But I think we're gonna really be happy with Joshua O'Halloran. We're very, very fortunate that he chose to accept the position. He is an NMSU grad. He's currently working in Las Cruces with his, and has, will be bringing his family here. His wife and four children, and we're really excited to welcome him into our community.
I'll just add that I called all of his references that were listed in his application, and they gave him a wonderful review. And so we are very fortunate as a village to have found an individual with his qualifications. If you have carefully read his resume, you can see that he has extensive and wide-ranging experience. So I think we're going to be in really good shape with him as our agricultural program manager. I'm going to call, I need a motion.
I move approval.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the governing body about this?
No, I just want to say you, it appears you really made a good choice.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no further questions from the governing body, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Riel?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yeah.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we are now ready for item thirteen, trustee informal discussion. Roundtable discussion is informal. The board of trustees will take no official vote or other official action. Trustee Riel, it's your turn.
I don't have anything, mayor. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Lewis?
I don't have anything this evening, neither. Thank you, mayor.
Trustee Pacheco?
I just wanted to mention, and I did mention this to Anne, I did talk to a business owner about the parking lot on Fourth Street and hoping that we can get some signage there. It just seems to be that we are not getting customers of these businesses. Somehow, they're not feeling welcomed into that parking lot.
Okay. Thank you for that comment, trustee Pacheco. We will definitely, Anne, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt, mayor. Trustee Pacheco, I did follow up with Maria Rinaldi on that. And part of our assessment of the signs on Fourth Street includes the sign for the parking lot. So that will be addressed.
Thank you.
Any others questions, trustee Pacheco? Trustee Ricabini?
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I just have a couple of interesting things, as all of you perhaps know, and maybe some of you don't. But at ten AM on Saturday, which is the Feast of San Isidro Day, there will be a blessing of the waters and the aseca at the AgriNature Center. And so all of the trustees, their significant others, or even friends for that matter, are invited to attend. Obviously, Burnley County went to the turquoise level. And so I think we can have a reasonable crowd at the AgriNature Center without any problem. So I look forward to that day. I'm, I'm very excited about it. So I wanted to point that out. My final thing that I want to mention to you is, I understand that the money from the American Rescue Plan is now being distributed not only to the state, but to metropolitan cities. And that, I understand, has occurred even on as early as the tenth of May. I've checked with a couple of communities, and they did, in fact, get their money. The Village of Los Ranchos is slated to get its money on June tenth. You know, I'm hoping that that will happen, and we'll start moving the process forward, as we discussed at the budget workshop, about the way that that funding can be used. I have no other comments to make, and so I'm going to adjourn the meeting. It's eight thirty-two PM. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for a great meeting. Thank you, Anne.
Everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.